Okay, all rise please for the Dutch. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So, welcome to the special meeting of the city council on Wednesday, July 10, 2024. Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Cunningham is absent. Councilwoman Goddard?
Here.
Councilwoman Henderson?
Here.
Councilwoman Jensen?
Here.
Councilman Nathan?
Here.
Councilwoman Souza is absent. Mayor Cohen?
Here. So, we have only one topic, and that is whether we will or will not execute a memorandum of understanding with Westchester Power. We do have a delegation from Sustainable Westchester here with us to answer questions. And if the council agrees, I'd suggest that we start by asking the Sustainable Westchester people any question, remaining questions we...
I think that's fine. Mr. Mayor, you might want to just start with one thing, and I've had a number of inquiries from people wondering why we're doing this in a special meeting, and you might want to, you know, start by telling, you know, that...
Okay, so that is because, at least last we heard, and Dan, you can correct me if things have changed, the Westchester Power was going to go to bid tomorrow. Okay, so, and you were going to go to bid on the basis of the number of municipalities that had agreed to enter into the MOU?
That's right.
And there was, there would be no assurance, despite past successes, no assurance that if we wanted to enter into an arrangement with Westchester Power post-bid, that the successful bidder would allow it. It would be within the successful bidder's discretion. And that's why, thank you for the suggestion, Bill. That's why we're having this meeting today, a day in advance of when we thought that bid would take place.
And if I could just add before we go, I just want to make sure, as mentioned in the past, that I am a board member of Sustainable Westchester. It's a volunteer position, but I just want to make sure that that's added for the record.
Dan, if you were to be the spokesperson, if you'd come to the podium and just introduce yourself and Westchester Power.
Hi, I'm Dan Welsh. I'm here with my colleague Angelie. We're both part of the Westchester Power program team. I'm the director of the team. And I'm here from Sustainable Westchester, which is a municipal membership nonprofit that the serves as a shared service for cities, towns, and villages in Westchester to forward their sustainability goals. And Westchester Power is one of the programs that helps them do that.
I have a series of, short series of questions for Dan, but if others have questions they'd like to ask, I defer. Dan, can you explain the contract term? That is, from the city's perspective? That is, how long our commitment would last? And can you also explain the term or tenor of the bid that you would be seeking? And can you explain how many fluctuations during that period there may be in the ConEd rate? That is, ConEd will be floating, we will be fixed.
Good, yeah. So, our current contract goes until the end of October. The, a new contract, should we secure it, would start on November 1st after that. And as to the, and the current contract was a two-year contract. As to the term of a future contract, although we do like to go out and solicit numbers for different years, just in case there's like a sweet spot where some, for some odd reason, the market is looking out in the future, and there is a dip, and it's more attractive. But from everything we've seen so far, there's still an advantage in the shorter one-year term. It's about it, roughly a half-cent difference, and we were just chatting offline. You know, if that were to close and come down to .2 cents or .3 cents, you'd start to say like, hmm, is there a benefit in trying to secure a sort of safety net for a longer period? But if we see half a cent or more, yes, we're better off. My guess is we're going to go with the one-year term for that reason.
Is there a term beyond which you will not go?
Yeah, and generally, the suppliers won't even go out further than, we haven't seen more than three years, and we're not unlikely to go that far. In the entire eight years of the program, we've only had, we've had one three-year term contract, but everything else has been two or one, or we've had 18 months and 19 months too.
And how often does ConEd reset?
So, ConEd, as you kind of implied, is a variable rate. It changes month to month. And it's basically set by, there's a pass-through process that happens on the NISO auction market, and they do incorporate some level of hedging where they're going out in the financial markets, and they're kind of smoothing things out a little bit. But you're going to see a different rate every month, and most rate payers are, at this point, aware of that, because you experience times when it'll drop down, and then, you know, wintertime, all of a sudden, it's at 23 cents or 24 cents. And so, it's very unpredictable where it might go. It's dependent on the markets.
We are offered different shades of green. That is, if we choose to enter into this. Can you explain the different shades of green and the optionality that may be exercised after we indicate our preference?
Sure. And so, this year, that particular element is, does comprise both sort of a challenge and an opportunity at the same time. Traditionally, there's only been one flavor of green energy that's been available to what they call the voluntary market. And these are, in New York State, they label these as different tiers, tier one, tier two, et cetera. And so, it's generally been tier-two voluntary RECs, which are renewable energy certificates, I have to watch my, the way I term these things, which represent legacy facilities. They're existing hydro facilities, or they can also be aged-out solar and wind facilities, but it's mostly hydro. But only this year has NYSERDA, through an order from the Public Service Commission, is going to make available the so-called tier-one RECs. Tier-one RECs are the kind of fresh, new projects that are just coming online, and those have traditionally just been buried in your bill as a socialized, it's the Clean Energy Standard Fund, it's a little sliver that's on your bill, and pretty invisible to everybody. But because of this changing market situation and the demand for renewable energy, in order to sort of pump that up, NYSERDA is making those tier-one RECs available this year for the first time. They're making them available for a sale, which is occurring at a discrete point in time, which is presenting the timing challenges to us that have probably dazzled everybody in terms of when we talk about the schedule. And they are 2025 renewable energy certificates, so they would be covering our usage during that part of the year. The prices for those tier-one RECs that they're going to make available are supposed to be, according to the NASP, NYSERDA, should be coming out by no later than July 15th, a few days from now. And once they're out, then we will be able to go to the supplier, who, hopefully, on the 16th, we have a new supplier, and say, all right, if we want to bring in tier-two RECs to go from 50% to 100%, I should back up and explain that piece to, in a moment, what would that new price be? So, let's back up, because I skipped over that part. Because of the demand on renewable energy, as we know, the tier-two RECs, there's been a shortage of those. That's why, again, they opened up the tier-one category. In fact, in the Yonkers situation and NYSAC, they both had to go to a 50% renewable supply product because of that shortage in their last contracts. So, currently, the, all the major suppliers of the tier-two-level RECs are saying, we're not likely to have enough RECs to cover 100% of your, the usage for the entire ConEd aggregation. It's very, it's a huge aggregation. So, they're guaranteeing enough to go out from 50% with certainty. Then the question is, you know, we all want to reduce our footprint entirely if we can. How do we get that extra 50%? And so, the opportunity arose, maybe we can go out and purchase those tier-one RECs to plug the gap. But it is going to be a kind of a bit of gymnastics where the price comes out, we're going to alert everybody to that, and at that point, you'll be able to make the decision. That's the amendment document that was included with your package. And should you want to attempt to secure those additional RECs to go up to 100%, you'd sign off on the amendment document, and that would be the document that would give the supplier security to go to NYSERDA and say, yeah, we want those RECs. The supplier makes a request, still takes like a week or something for the, for NYSERDA to come back and say, okay, you've got them, because they're going up for a general sale.
That kicks in after we sign the MOU, that second choice?
Yes. So, the base MOU covers essentially the base contract, the 50% contract. And then, in your authorization, the way it's been written today, it also speaks to the city manager being able to go and sign that amendment, should the pricing and the other conditions be such that, you know, it meets your criteria.
Tier one, tier-two is legacy hydro, tier-one is solar and wind?
Generally, solar and wind, that's what's going.
And if we find ourselves with tier-two 50%, where does the other 50% come from if not tier-one? We're just getting...
It may be that that's where this round stays, at 50%. We can also...
But then the customer is essentially buying the ConEd rate for the other 50%?
Well, there'd be, there would be a, essentially, the rate would be comprised of the base power plus 50% of the price of a REC, essentially.
Not ConEd, because it's a contract.
So, it would be a hybrid rate. But, you know, it's not that you have a separate power supply in there, in a sense.
It all comes from the same supplier, but 50% is not green?
Yes. Because remember, the RECs essentially are making up for the fact that when you buy renewable energy, you're not, you know, tracing the electron from the generator up to your wall outlet, you know? It's a financial transaction. How does the grid get greener? People pay for green energy generators to put energy in the grid for them. So, you're accounting for that.
It's a signal of demand, is what you're saying.
Right. Well, it's an actual purchase.
Yeah.
But just to be clear, and I think this is what you're getting at, Mr. Mayor, the price that the consumer pays, whether the mix is 50% from tier-two and 50% from wherever, is a flat rate?
Yes.
Okay, so it's just the mix, but the stability of pricing is still in... Okay, I got it.
Yeah, so if, for example, sort of the base power price was, let's just say, 10 cents, and the RECs cost 3 cents or something like that, but it was a 50% supply, then it'd be a penny and a half for the additional renewable energy component of that 50% product. You know, it'd be 11 and a half cents.
And there's, of course, a price differential if we find ourselves in the 50% category as opposed to 100%. That is, the tier-one cost would be different from the ordinary power supply?
Yeah.
That otherwise would comprise the 50%?
Yeah, and it'll be straight-up math based on the prices of the RECs.
Can you tell me, so, the contracts since 2019 have been 50% renewable, is that correct?
No, our contracts up to now in the ConEd territory have been 100% default for everybody except for Mount Kisco.
100% renewables?
Yeah, 100% renewable.
Not 50% renewables?
No, right. This is only in the past couple of years where, as I said, the demand has gone up, and there's been a shortage. That's why, you know, there's this kind of shuffle to try and open up the market.
So, the new contract is 50 to 100 as opposed to 100?
It would be, 50% is assured, and then we're making efforts to see, can we put in a mechanism to flip it to 100%, you know, should those RECs...
And when you talk about renewables, are you including nuclear in that number?
No, we generally, and the state definition doesn't include nuclear in renewables, but they do include, if you look at some reports, it's in, it's part of their emissions-free block, you know? But if you, you'll see various pie diagrams and things, and the renewables would be this, and then there's nuclear as a separate sliver, but we don't include that as part of our renewable.
Why not?
Well, it's not... The definition of renewables does not include nuclear.
Yeah, it just has, it's not part of the Sustainable Westchester mission to, say, drive nuclear power or anything like that. We're not, we're not out there, you know, we're trying to drive the increase in renewable energy, and we're not an advocacy organization either, where we're, you know, lying down and locking ourselves to the gates of the nuclear facilities either. We're kind of agnostic on that, but our job is, and our mission is to be consistent with all the other work we do around, you know, community solar and electrifying buildings and everything, is to try and move the needle on the renewables.
And the category, the nuclear category is called emissions-free?
Right.
The renewable category is wind and solar and hydro.
Yeah, and in fact, you know, back in 2018 or so, the state initiated a new sliver on your bill called the ZEC, the Zero Emissions Charge, and that was to essentially rescue some of the nuclear plants in upstate New York that were having a little problems, and they felt this is part of our emissions-free portfolio, want to keep this, so now, you know, so they consider that zero emissions, but it's not considered renewable.
They're actually different to put on. Like, we can ask them to go and do a renewable energy project, we can do solar, we can do a small one, we can do a big one, but to put in nuclear energy, it's a huge catch.
This is true, yeah.
At the state critical level, so it's not, like, this is all trying to enhance to get people to create the demand for renewable, and no one's like, hey, I'm going to put in a nuclear power project. Now, maybe someday they will, because that technology is going places with the stuff that heats it up, but like now, it's a huge billion...
Billions.
And the waste issues that are still associated with nuclear power?
Exactly.
This country has been looking at those issues for more than 50 years and has not resolved how to long-term deal with nuclear waste that stay dangerous for thousands of years.
And it's not renewable, meaning, once you burn the nuclear, the nuclear material, the fusion, it's spent, and you have to turn, as you say, Mr. Mayor.
Well, it's full of plutonium and radioactive nitric acid.
It's a sidebar, but they just put something in Wyoming, which is a sodium pool, not using water, it's much more efficient and lower pressures. It's kind of a risk of it blowing up, but you still have spent nuclear material. And it's, the whole idea that, what Dan's saying is, the demand, the fact that we can't get 50% of it now is actually a good thing. It means everybody's asking for it, they're going to put it online, and that is creating demand. The whole idea of this program is to do that.
James, can we invite you up after we're done with Dan?
Sorry. Daniel, I have a question. So, how to phrase this? I wasn't at the presentation, but I do think because consumer awareness is an important part of the conversation, can you talk more about fixed rates? And I'm going to give you a little background. So, I am signed up for an ESCO, and in the last six months, my rates have gone from 15% to 64% month-to-month. At 2022, I was paying 37 cents per kilowatt hours for an ESCO for clean energy. So, give me the argument why fixed rates might be a good idea, because that fluctuation was like this for six months. Over me opting in, because the whole conversation is about opting, you can opt in to an ESCO if you want an ESCO.
Right.
Give me the argument for fixed rates for our audience that may be watching or may watch on a tape later on.
Yeah.
I think it's really important for the community to hear that.
Great, yeah. And just, it sounded like maybe you were in a variable rate arrangement or something like that.
It was a variable rate, and when you tried to quit, they promised us they would give us a fixed rate, and we were like, no, we've had enough with you.
Yeah, yeah.
Done.
So, I mean, for those who have experienced, say, you know, buying fuel oil for your house for the winter or something, you can, you'll find a company and lock in for the wintertime. And you're kind of doing that as a kind of insurance policy, right? You don't know what's going to happen, it's going to be cold winter or not, there's going to be some shortage, or price is going to spike, and you might not beat the market price, or you might, you know, but at least you had this kind of level of insurance. So, I think that's certainly one way to look at it. And in the case of this program, it's one more option that people wouldn't have if the program wasn't here. Granted, it's an opt-out program, so people need to, you know, if they want to do something else, they have to opt out, but you have to do that if you're with the utility and you want to do something else too. So, it's just kind of changing the set point.
Why would it have to be an opt-out program?
It wouldn't exist as a program.
Is that because people, we count on people not finding out about it and staying in it, and so they don't opt out, and so you have more bulk? I mean, is that the only reason why an opt-out program really works?
Is ConEd an opt-out program?
ConEd is also an opt-out program, that's right. So, you know, back to the original core, why does that have to be an opt-out program? You can't go out to the market and take bids in the way we are and secure, you know, a fixed amount of power on the basis of like, well, we might have some people sign up. You need a...
Why not get the people to sign up ahead of time?
Let me ask a question.
Yeah.
Let me, I'm asking him the question. I know, but I think you're missing, you're asking the wrong person.
Well, I mean, I'm happy to respond. I just think, you know, there is just a practical question. If you're saying, get people to sign up ahead of time, so, we would get a bunch of people who said, yeah, I'm interested in this, and we'd have to sign up, you know, thousands or something, and then take that commitment, and they're, you know, obviously, that's going to take time, and they're waiting, and then you're going out to the market and saying, well, I've got 1,000 people here. That's theoretically possible, but I don't know that that's actually practically possible.
Wasn't the regulatory requirement that it be an opt-out?
No, that's, and I think that's a, that's a, you know, interpretation when we said it's not possible, it's really not possible from a practical standpoint. There's no law that says you can't set up a program where, you know, people voluntarily opt in, but you just won't really have a program. It would be like, like, you could go find an ESCO and just say, go sign up with this ESCO, you could certainly do that. But the, ultimately, we're, it is about volume and trying to move as much renewable energy and move the needle on that as much as possible. I mean, that's why we're all doing this. There's, you know, we can be perfectly frank about that. And is there kind of an inertia factor? Yeah, like, there's not that many people, you know, spend a lot of time thinking about that, which is why, for the past, you know, 25 years, when we had green options, people weren't doing it, because they just, like, they're busy, and they, you know. So, but we do have an obligation to get out there and push out information, make sure people are aware, make sure they know they have these options. And certainly, when they call us and they say, you know, I want to do this and that, I want to switch, we're like, sure, I mean, you should do that, people should know this. And if you feel there's some other ways that we can accomplish that and make sure people are aware of the program, know their options, we're ready to jump in and help.
I think Josh has a comment, but I do want to come back to the disclosure point, which is, I think, very important to everyone up here.
Yeah, I agree, and my comment will maybe take us right to that, and then you can make that comment. Bill, I was just, and your question's fine, it's just, there's two things. One, the city of Rye, as I understand it, does not have the ability, and Westchester Power, based on how it is organized, incorporated, and established, doesn't have the ability to separately negotiate an opt-in option with the city of Rye. It's an opt-out program. We couldn't sit here and do an MOU with you and say, well, each municipality's signed whatever they've signed, and Rye wants to do an opt-in program, even if we all sat here and said, that's a great idea, and notwithstanding what you said about whether the program could work, that's not an available negotiable term in the entire Westchester Power universe.
No, it's not something we offer, right.
So, it's a moot, it's a moot point, and that's, I think, important to understand, because a couple of people have asked, well, why isn't it an opt-in? I asked, why isn't it an opt-in?
And we might add that...
It's not a, it's not a choice right now. The other thing that I think is important to appreciate is, somebody is the default power source in the end of the day, whether it's ConEd or Westchester Power, or theoretically an ESCO, or some other thing that hasn't come down the pike yet. Something is where you start, and then, as a consumer, you have options. And if I understand correctly, if I'm currently in Westchester Power, at any time, I can go online and click and no longer purchase from Westchester Power. If I'm in ConEd, I can at any time go online and click, and my next month, I'll be in Westchester Power. There's no lock-in or lock-out, and so I have options. The ESCOs have commitments, I don't know, there's 50 of them, I don't know all of them, but what I saw, from what I looked at, is you can opt out of ConEd, you can skip Westchester Power, and you can go over to an ESCO.
Okay.
And then you, from what I saw, you were mostly locking in for a year, but there may be other things, so I don't want to represent to the community what it is, but it's all long-term. And it's not an in-and-out, and I think, Jamie, that was your experience, is you had to wait to get out. And so, they all have their own terms. So, Bill, in the end of the day, you start somewhere, and then you make a choice, and unfortunately, or fortunately, depending on how you look at it, either we have choices or we have fewer choices.
Well, I think to ask the question is, you know, if you're going to ask the hypothetical question, why is Westchester Power opt-out, or why is it not opt-in, then you also have to ask the question, why is ConEd opt-out or opt-in? And those are both, you know, valid sort of hypothetical questions, but that's what we, as consumers of energy, that's what we face in Westchester County. You're either going to be ConEd, you're going to be, if you move into a town that's not in... be, if you move into a town that's not a, in town XYZ in Westchester County or elsewhere, you are put into a ConEd territory, and, and you need to physically opt out and find an ESCO to, to service your power supply needs. If you are in a Westchester Power municipality, then you are opted into that Westchester Power, but then you can decide, I've got ConEd, or you can do ESCO. So you have that extra layer of choice. That's the only difference.
But the, the difference with the ConEd is, is their mission is to deliver the energy, but the energy, if you're in the ConEd program, you're, you are getting their energy, a cost, the cheapest energy that they can buy in New York. And, and because of the, the grids, we were on the phone with them yesterday, and their, their, their offering is, is highly with renewables as well. Just 2020, there are 55% renewables, if you include nuclear, 48% in 2021, 45% in 2022, 43% in 2023. So they're, they're a very, their sources of energy are, are highly renewable, including nuclear.
Well, let me finish, let me finish first, please. And, and their mission is to deliver the cheapest energy that they can. And they've got a 50-man shop that hedges and does a lot of things to deliver power as cheaply as they can. So if you're in the ConEd program, you're, you're really looking at what are, what are the least expensive energy costs for the consumer versus Westchester Power, which is contractual. So maybe some years you might get lucky with the market and the contract could beat the market, but that's not been the history. And generally speaking, renewable energy, if you're buying 50% renewables, it's going to be more expensive. So I think, Bill, you, two, two things that are important to keep in mind. I was on that call, and I'm glad we had it. I learned a lot about energy, more than I ever thought I would. But the big takeaway-
Learned a lot that you didn't know, too, right?
Learned a lot that I didn't know, yeah. But me, too. And the, the renewable numbers, if, if you use the actual definitions, are about 17%. And I don't have that chart in front of me, but-
Twenty-nine, 29, 27, and 24.
Is renewable, not, not, it's when you take out-
Renewable, non-nuclear.
Statewide.
Okay, so you take out, statewide, statewide.
I think Dan probably knows.
Okay.
Yeah.
statewide, it's not county.
But I mean, just if we're going to compare-
This is what the, what we get.
Okay, so I'm just comparing, if we're comparing renewables, let's just stick to the definitions. The second thing is, and, you know, there's two different value propositions here, right? Some people are picking their energy based solely on price. Some people are picking their energy based on stability of price. Some people are picking their energy based on a desire to support renewables, or one of the promises of one of the 50 ESCOs, and I, again, don't know all the different propositions. So, if you are interested in renewables, then Westchester Power makes that offering. If you're interested in price, Westchester Power is, some years, competitive. Some years, it's more expensive. Some years, it's cheaper, as I recall from the chart. Two of the years, it was cheaper. Three of the years, it was not, or four, whatever it was. If you care solely about price, you can watch it. ConEd is a fluctuating market. And yes, they have a shop that hedges and buys on the spot market, manages that. It's, it's sophisticated, and I appreciated learning how that worked. But in the end of the day, they can't guarantee, nor do they, they don't even, that's not their proposition. They don't say, we're giving you always the cheapest deal. They're saying, in the market today, this is the best price we could get. That may or may not, and they said this, is that may or may not be higher or lower than whatever you've locked in. So if you want stability, the two programs that offer stability are Westchester Power, or a bunch of the ESCOs offer some kind of stability. If you want always the cheapest price, you could flip back and forth between ConEd and Westchester Power, if you want to be that involved.
When you say "you," you're talking about the individual consumer?
You're the consumer, the individual consumer.
But if the, if the, if the-
Or, or-
If the city of Rye enters into this contract, and the individual consumer doesn't know they're being put in a Westchester Power contract, they, they don't have that power.
So, so let's go to the mayor's-
They don't know, because they don't know where they are.
So let's go to the mayor's comment on that, because-
Just before we-
That's really important.
Before we, we get to disclosure, Dan, there's something you wanted to add to the price discussion.
Those numbers, the, the entire state renewable portfolio is at about 28% renewable. That includes all the upstate renewables. ConEd, as you receive it, is not 28% renewable. Remember what I said, that you, you buy renewable energy by actually paying for it? So although the state grid is 28% renewable, ConEd, the last, you know, every, there are annual environmental disclosure reports for, for each supply. The latest one for ConEd is, is 2022, and it's about, it's less than 12% renewable.
That's not the data they gave us.
It's statewide.
We got directly from ConEd.
Well, I can pull it up on the website for you.
She brought it up today with an email clarifying.
Yes, yes. What they get, what they deliver is what the New York State NYSERDA or NISO, I can't keep any of these, any of these straight. But, but that's what they deliver, the, the state percentage.
Let's, let's-
That's what they told us.
Let's move to disclosure.
Yep, sure, yep, yep.
So, I think, as, as one who was sitting on this day as years ago, and agreeing we should go into Westchester Power, I now sit here years later, dissatisfied with the efficacy of the disclosure we attempted. And we did have discussions with Westchester Power as we were implementing Westchester Power about how we might reach out to residents, prospective customers, and inform them of what they were being put into and how they could get out of it. And despite those discussions and our efforts, I feel as if we came up short. Now, when Noam Bramson was here a few weeks ago, he said that Westchester Power was working and was prepared to work further to improve the means of disclosure and communication with prospective customers, so that we would avoid any feeling that people were unwittingly finding themselves residing within Westchester Power for longer than they would like. Please pick, pick up the, the question that's implicit in that commentary.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not going to say that we're satisfied with the, you know, with the awareness level. We're never satisfied with that, and we would definitely want to follow through on that commitment. We've thrown out, I think, a lot of ideas to our municipal counterparts. We'd be happy to see even a, a robo-call go out. Although that would have to be, you know, you'd have to tune that pretty well, because you can't pick the Westchester Power customers, but so it would have to be well worded and everything. But we're happy to, you know, have everybody know what's going on and have access to that information. And we're ready to, you know, if you feel there's certain media or timings or methods that are most effective.
So I, I had asked in, in, in advance of, of this meeting, and received a positive response. That is, you could monthly provide us with comparatives of your rate and the current ConEd rate, and the history, comparative history of the rates as it progresses. And I, I would urge that to be for the entire period, historical period of our relationship with Westchester Power. And then I, I would see us taking on the responsibility of putting it on our website and making it available through the city app. I, I like the robo-call idea, at least at inception. How would you propose reaching new customers? New party moves to Rye, is, enters into a ConEd account. How, how, how do we reach them? How are we going to let them know right away that they, they face this choice?
Well, they won't face it right away. They'll, because we get data in batches from, from ConEd, just, again, as a matter of practicality. So it's every four months we get the new accounts, not on a sort of daily basis. And then a mailing goes out. So they would get the, the same opt-out mailing that other people see at the beginning of a contract, you know, some, some period after they, after they moved in and they signed on to their, their electricity account.
Also, just if I could just add one thing, I do think that even though they were a challenge to get people to attend, Westchester Power, Sustainable Westchester, has done info sessions in Rye, mainly through Rye Sustainability. At least when I was on Rye Sustainability, I don't know if more, they were Zoom sessions during the pandemic. I don't know how many were done. It's always-
Down here in the, in this-
Right, and they were over the library, and just kind of a, because it is such a complicated topic, regardless of whether it's Westchester Power, ConEd, or whatever, it's just a really complicated topic. And those sorts of info sessions, the key is obviously getting people to attend. It's very difficult to get people to attend, but if the city can put the date of the info sessions on the website, and if it's through Rye Sustainability, or any of the other boards and commissions that might be relevant, then, you know, maybe we could-
And we do record them. We do record them, so you could point people to-
Well, that's a good idea, too.
After the fact as well.
I think there's another thing that, I don't know, you could provide the content, but, I mean, I, I have found that the real estate brokers in Rye, when you first move into Rye, or if you change homes in Rye, are incredibly useful. And particularly, if you've come up from the city, those folks tell you how everything works. And I think if the city had a one sheet, and we gave it to the real estate firms and the Chamber of Commerce, I could-
That's a good idea.
That's great.
Even Westchester Power does an info session for Realtors, maybe not in Rye. I know you're stretched, but maybe, you know, a, a webinar for Realtors in the area. This is what this means. It's a really good idea to add it, so that new homeowners understand that there's this choice, and you can opt out if you don't like it, or you can stay in if you do.
And then we have, you know, we have MyRye and, and the Rye Record, who will, I'm sure, cover this. And, you know, that's the kind of thing that would-
We, we can certainly use our communication resources to-
Give them the information.
-come up with a standard format and regular reporting. The one thing that I just want to caution everybody, I don't, on the robo-call, the only robo-call aspect that we have is a code-red mechanism, which I don't know is something we can use. It's a, it's a national standard. I don't know whether we can use it or not, so I just want to manage expectations on the robo-call aspect. But when it comes to listserv, you know, regular use of the websites, social media, the city app, all these others, we certainly have the staffing to, you know, to work with them to do.
I see, would see us needing your information as a core.
Sure.
But also the city having the ability to do a kind of plain language rap, that is our information and yours.
Josh, I really appreciated you asking for as much detail we can get as things change in the conversation. And, and I'm, I'm trying to figure out where that was laid out in this. Was it laid out in this?
I did not see it laid out in, in, in the memorandum of understanding.
In terms of the communication?
Yes.
It's not in the, in the MOU, but we can certainly, you know, follow this up with a, a message which captures all that.
A written understanding.
Yeah.
And I-
It is, is free virtually, taking all this down.
I, I think that we in, in city government would like to get regular reporting to you on how we're doing in terms of opt-outs, so that we can gauge-
Yeah.
-how, how successful the program is being, and perhaps how successful our disclosure is being.
Yeah, no, we can definitely give you those, those numbers. I like to think of them at this mature stage of the program as more of a, a net attrition number, because now you've got people going out, people going in. It's, it's not like when you do an initial mailing and, you know, 8% of the people opted out, then you, then you have a, a number, that's the opt-out number. But when you're going along, and we're already at this point, it's like, how many accounts do we have, say, relative to the beginning, or relative to the number of households in, in, in the city, and that kind of thing. So we can, we can provide some numbers like that, so you can kind of track how, how, whether we have stable rolls, or they're dropping off, or-
If that exhausts my list of, of questions, if others have more for Dan. If not, James Ward is here, and he was, he was eager, he was eager to speak, to speak from his-
There was another person here, but she had the lead, Luis.
Yeah, I'm happy to say something on that.
Then, please come.
So, obviously, James Ward, 50 Raymond F. I, I think there's a lot we could talk about. And I think we could talk about the fact that it's July, and we had our first hurricane rip through the middle of the country. We could talk about last year and how we looked up in the sky, and it was red and full of sit because Quebec was on fire. But I don't think we need those reminders to say that the, we're currently in a changed climate. And we're lucky to be part of a state that is promoting a move to decarbonization. And part of that process is what we're talking about here, promoting renewable energy. We joined Climate Smart Communities, and we've been successful in that. And we did it for a number of reasons. One, it's a popular program. It's something that our community can say we do. There's a lot of community involvement. But it's also good for the municipality, I've been told, that it helps us write grants and get potentially more grants to the city in the form of funds. Part of the reason we have the status that we have is because we were part of the CCA. We will be reassessed on that, and if we are reassessed and we lose that status, we will not be able to say that on grants. In fact, I will think we will come out less favorably on grants if we were actually to be dropped from that program. So I could mention that. But I guess what I would mention is, we're in a community that I think values this. You know, we looked at our adoption of EVs, for, for instance, and we're one of the highest in the states. We're like, six, I think, over six, maybe even seven percent of the cars on the road right now in Rye are EVs. And we're, it's, the number's going up every year. Even though, you know, there's been a lag in EV adoption, and there's all that, I think we, generally, we want these things. And when I look at this program, I think the number that Noam said last time was, is about 3,600 households that are on Westchester Power. I think when we make these decisions, we should look at what we take away from people and what we give to other people. No surprise that there's none of the people here with some of the other decisions we had this place fall, but not a lot of people, I think, are really bent on this decision. And I think there's a lot of people participating in this, and they know they're participating. Because the people of Rye, the citizens of Rye are smart people, and they know how to opt out of things. Now, I'm not saying that everybody knows, and I think we should improve that. And I'm happy to work with the city to, to do that in whatever way, shape, or form. But I wouldn't, I wouldn't neglect that fact that I think people are on it because they want it. Because it's the cheapest way to get renewable, fully renewable power. Now, what Dan was saying is, we're not going to have that next year. We might only get 50%. We might only get 50%. We could get 100 with tier one, that'd be fantastic, but it might be some mix of those things. And as I said, and as the mayor cut me off because I was way out of line, or way out of turn, I should say, you know, that's a good thing. By promoting these things, we will get more renewables and we will decarbonize our grid and that's what we want. Because going back to the beginning of what I said, there's crazy days. Every day is hotter than the next. Every summer is hotter than the next. This summer will be hotter than last summer and next summer will be hotter than this summer, right? We're getting more deluge rains. The 100 year storm comes every 10 years now. We're going to have another flood. Why? Things are hot, there's a lot of water in the air and it comes all at once. And then we're screaming, we're running for the doors and we're putting in our pumps and we're doing all these things. So we need to do this because it's part of the overall solution. It's like we're going in, we're hitting a tree and we're just putting on the brakes as hard as we can and we should decarbonize as quickly as we can. And taking this away, making people scramble for, you know, independent providers of renewables is a disaster for all those people. And going back to it, it doesn't really provide all the people, those people that really want to opt out that aren't because they didn't know how to, it's just education, but you can't go the other way with it. Meaning I can go back into, I can go into Con Ed whenever I want and I can go back in this program. I don't and a lot of us don't because we care and we want to do this, just like why we buy EVs when they're more expensive. We can do it and we want to do it. So going, starting off and saying the better thing would be to start with Con Ed because sometimes it's cheaper.
People can do it, in other words.
What's that?
You, the more wealthy people can do it.
I didn't say that, you said that.
You said, no, you said you could, you would buy an EV even though it costs more, so you would just buy it.
But that's not a definition of wealth.
That's not the definition of wealth, that's a definition of sending.
Point is, is that.
I, don't twist my words, Bill. I've been on your side for a lot of stuff. Don't twist my words. All I said was, we're adopting EVs fast and people do it because they want to do it. I didn't mention their wealth. For all I know, there's people, I drive a Chevy, right? It's one of the cheapest cars you can get, so don't like, but I went and bought it. It's like, I'm not saying people are, we're wealthy, so do this. So I don't want, I don't think it's fair to take me down that thing. I never said that. What I said was, I think the majorities of people are doing it. It is more expensive, it has been more expensive on occasion and people stayed in it and I think they knew. I said the residents of Rye are smart enough to know when to opt out if they wanted to do it and they choose not to do it. That doesn't mean we shouldn't educate them and figure it out, like if there are people being harmed, because I would agree with that. No one should be harmed by any program, but we're giving more choice and by putting those people, everybody into Con Ed first, we're hurting all of the other people because then I'm going to Inescos and I'm trying to find my energy and I can't find it and I'm getting into contracts I don't like. These guys are getting us into the cheapest renewables we can on a level and a lot of people are participating in it. I think we'd look ridiculous. That's my, from my heart.
I think this is the essential argument is who should choose, the city or individuals? Should individuals be able to choose their, make their own energy choices?
I think they are able to do it. I think what you do is you're taking away from someone, but you're not giving those people anything else that they couldn't achieve as long as they like opt out.
I think the issue, the issue is, as the mayor has identified and I think we've all discussed and acknowledged, is greater disclosure. Now, there should be greater disclosure among all of the power suppliers, Con Ed, ESCOs, every single entity. It's not just Westchester Power. As I said before, this is a very complicated issue. It's one where, you know, where we don't understand it, we don't understand the regulatory system surrounding, we don't understand, at least for me, the, you know, the physics behind it. It has so many complications, so many layers, but that shouldn't prevent, prevent us from understanding how we as consumers get our power. And what I will say is that Westchester Power is the one entity that's standing up here saying, absolutely, let's, let's try to educate, let's try to make the options that are available to the consumer understandable and be aware. So that's, it's not about choice being taken away if, if Rye or other municipalities decide to go with Westchester Power. It's actually adding choices. That is a fact. It's adding choices, as you've mentioned, for those who want to stay in Westchester Power. If Rye does not sign this MOU, all of those people who want to be Westchester Power customers will be forced, forced to become Con Ed customers or seek out a private ESCO.
I agree, like, I feel like you've taken away choice from people and you've given some people the, not really that much. You've taken away from a lot of people and you've given not really that much. Like, everybody knows how to opt out. There, I'm not saying, I'm saying on average, I bet you if we went and polled somehow.
I didn't know, until I heard about this three months ago, I didn't ever even knew about this thing and.
You gotta follow the sustainable newsletter.
Anything else, so I've been paying higher electric bills for years and years and years and I didn't even know that the city put us into this contract. And so, you know, I had no choice in the matter, I didn't know about it. And maybe I'm, maybe I'm not as smart as most people, but my guess is that most people in Rye don't know about it either.
Again, I think you'd be giving people like yourself need to be educated more.
Maybe I do.
And that's how I would say, of like, okay, you know, personal experience is legitimate.
I, James, thank you. I'd like to move again with thanks, James.
Thank you.
To council discussion and see if we can.
I just have just one thing, it's just to make this distinction that somehow or another, it's the, the assumption that Westchester Power is more expensive than other suppliers. No one, no one on the planet can predict what the price, what the variable rate, what the market price of power will be two months from now, three months from now, a year from now, no one. You can, you can hedge, you can have futures contracts, you can educate yourself as to what perhaps the rates will be in the future, but none of us is a fortune teller. What we will know, whether Rye decides to, to sign the MOU or not, what we will know in a few weeks is the fixed rate of Westchester Power. And that is something that will be a certainty for a year or a little bit more. And that's the difference. Nobody can guarantee that Con Ed's rate is going to be less than the fixed rate, no one. And so we've got to kind of dispel that, that somehow or another, you know, Westchester Power customers are being, you know, given a higher rate because no one can say that that's for sure. And the other thing is, is as utilities do increase their renewable energy mix, the rates will go up by definition because it just is more expensive.
Can, can we have everybody on the council who cares to express themselves and then see if we move a resolution?
Okay. Who do you want to start with?
Well, let's just start at Jamie's end.
I'm gonna first thank the mayor and Julie is not here and Sarah for bringing our community into this conversation and to thank all of you who are showing up for the robustness, the willingness that you have to sit here before there. Part of the reason why I brought my example into somebody who cares about being in the renewable conversation in my experience with an ESCO was to say, you have grown in my esteem as opposed to me not trusting you because suddenly my bill went up or their bills went up. Because I, because I feel like it is the, it is truly a real choice versus yet another predatory marketer, you know, kind of. I'm trying to really understand what my alternatives are to Con Ed if I care about renewables. And I feel like Westchester Power gives me a really, really good option. So if I'm a day trader and I want to mess and in and out of ESCOs and spend all my time, but the vast majority of Rye residents are not going to do that. And the vast majority of Rye residents stick with the status quo and they have inertia and they go to their jobs every day and they raise their children and they don't think about these issues. But if you ask them, they say, of course we care about renewable energies, we should be doing this. So what we're doing is providing that option for them without a whole hell of a lot of work. And then, and really to the mayor's point, we have to have a strong disclaimer. So I'm looking at Westchester Power and saying to you, if I vote for this, I expect that back from you, that really strong disclaimer opportunity. So that's where I stand.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I want to say thank you to all my colleagues up here and many others for all their calls and well wishes during the last two weeks as I've been recovering from my back surgery. It's much appreciated and I believe I'm slowly mending. Mr. Mayor, I assume that by calling this meeting, you have the votes to approve the new contract. And as all of my colleagues up here know, because I've shared my thoughts with all of you the last few weeks, as I've been sitting at home with nothing to do other than deal with the pain from my operation, is that I'm very skeptical of this arrangement. I may be the only person here voting against it, so please allow me a few minutes to explain why. First of all, let me say that all things considered, I'm in favor of clean and renewable energy over fossil fuels, reasonable price differences. We're all concerned about climate change and want to do all we can to combat this. So thank you to all my colleagues for caring about this. I think your hearts are in the right places, even though I may disagree that this is a good idea. So why am I against this? In a nutshell, through this arrangement, I believe the city council is putting community choice over individual Rye consumers' choice. The council's action force all Rye consumers to have Westchester Power as their default energy provider instead of Con Ed and affirmatively opt out if they don't want to pay Westchester Power's higher rates. Opt out schemes are like a tax and inherently undemocratic. Rye consumers will be in large part not opt out because they will not be aware that they have been put into a more expensive scheme. People are busy, they have busy lives and most will never become aware of this regardless of how you enhance disclosure of an opt out option. Quite simply, most people will never get the memo. I believe that local government has no business getting in between Rye residents and their electricity providers. Rye residents are perfectly capable of making their own decisions and I believe they can make better choices for themselves than this city council, with all due respect, can make. Here are some uncomfortable facts for me. One, since the Rye City Council first entered into this relationship in 2019, over six years of activity, Westchester Power cost Rye consumers more than Con Ed as a default provider of electricity in five of the six years. Two, per Westchester Power, the total added cost per consumer over the six years was $871. We went back and forth trying to get these figures and that's using Westchester Power as a default provider over Con Ed. Per our recent discussions with Con Ed, they say the difference is 1,168. Take either figure, 871 or 1,168, that's real money out of the pocket of the average Rye consumer. Number three, per Westchester Power, the total aggregate increased cost to Rye consumers over the six years that we've been in this program is $3,277,515. That's using Westchester Power as the default provider over Con Ed. Per recent discussions with Con Ed, it seems the differences could be higher, but they didn't come up with a number, so we'll go with 3.2. Still a lot of money. Four, per Westchester Power, the best estimate as to the number of Rye residents, and I was very concerned that we had a hard time trying to get an opt out number and I think if we do go forward with this, I think there needs to be more rigor into having that kind of data for Rye. But their best estimate as to the number of Rye residents who became aware of the Westchester Power program and chose to opt out is 493 or 11.9% of the consumers in Rye. So it sounds to me that, as one could logically expect, most Rye residents never got the memo. Rye consumers already have choices they can make on their own. There are 62 ESCOs that provide electric offerings to Rye consumers other than Con Ed or Westchester Power. Practically all of these ESCOs provide renewable energy options, some with renewable targets higher than Westchester Power. And interested Rye consumers can opt in, not opt out, opt in to these providers anytime they like. So this begs the question, why is the city council forcing Rye consumers into the Westchester Power scheme? Finally, we talked to representatives at Con Ed yesterday. Despite arguments we heard from Westchester Power that Con Ed energy default is about favoring dirty fossil fuel, ours provides to learn that this is not the case. The Con Ed default offering from 2020 to 2023, four years, averaged 48% renewable energy overall. That's 27% hydro, solar and wind and 21% nuclear. Or you might disagree that nuclear is renewable, but it still is a climate friendly and non-carbon emitting energy, which I think is the point of all this. And 52% was fossil fuel, mostly relatively clean burning natural gas. So Con Ed is already providing very close to 50% renewable energy to Rye consumers that care about climate change, the same target that Westchester Power contract provides. So given the history of six years of Rye's relationship with Westchester Power, we can be confident that entering to these contracts will cost Rye consumers more money than if they remain with the Con Ed as a default option. Given that the Con Ed default option already provides for close to 50% renewable energy and consumers already have the option on their own to purchase renewable energy from ESCOs, my question is why the city council should force this choice on Rye consumers? Respectfully, and I mean that, we should exercise restraint. We have no business doing this. I would be happy to support an opt in contract with Westchester Power, but as we've discussed, no such contract is available. I understand that promoting clean energy is a good thing to do, but I am not convinced that the ends justify the means here as it relates to this Westchester Power scheme. So with all due respect, I'm going to vote no on this resolution. Thanks for giving me the time to speak to it.
Sarah?
Thank you. And I, I feel like I already sort of said my bit earlier. I will just reiterate that having Westchester Power as an additional power supplier is, provides more choice. And if you are a consumer and you care about price and cost, then you do need to provide more choices for consumers to choose among. So if Rye does not sign this MOU, then Rye residents are forced, in Bill's language, are forced to, to be with one default supplier, they, an opt out default supplier, and they will not have the choice. And as, as we have discussed about the ESCOs, yes, there are 62 ESCOs. If you go on to the New York State website page that lists the ESCOs, the first thing, and I encourage everybody to go in, the first thing on the New York State website page related to ESCOs is an enormous disclaimer saying, you know, this is basically consumer tread carefully because of some of the practices of these private ESCOs. So it's a, it's a tricky, I'm not saying that all of them are that way, but the New York State website is saying tread carefully, do your research because the price fluctuations for the opt in, in order to be able to make a profit, that's, that's, that's one of the ways that they do that. So, so to have that extra choice for those who want to stay with Con Ed and prefer Con Ed, Rye residents can do that under the existing arrangement. If they want to stay with Westchester Power, they can do that, they can go back and forth. It's, there's no cost. Westchester Power is a nonprofit that exists as, as, as an organization driven to have its mission to transition the county to.
its mission to transition the county to clean energy. That's what it exists for. So, for me, it's about providing my residents more choice and the ability to choose among different power suppliers. The other thing that I will reiterate is that no one can predict the future. And so, if you're concerned about price and you're only stuck with one power supplier, then that's the price you're paying. And so, if you have two to choose from, you can at least go back and forth. But if you only have one, then you're stuck with that price. And if the utility, if the market rates skyrocket, you're stuck paying that. If the utility incorporates more of a green mix, the price is going to go up. So, that's just one thing to keep in mind, and the choice would be taken away if you are left with one power supplier.
Josh?
I don't have a lot to add substantively, but I'll just make my views clear. So, one, I think that, Bill, I appreciate your points, but the flaw to me is, this actually creates choice. The government is not forcing us into something. It's saying, we're giving you two choices. One of them has to be the start. One of them is the default. The way it's set up, this one is the default. If people don't like it, it's extraordinarily easy to click out of it. You literally click out. And I think we can communicate that. I appreciate the work that the prior council did in bringing us into the program, and I appreciate their diligence. The mayor was kind enough to call with me last week and explain how that came to be and what they've looked at, and where he thought we could use more clarity, and I fully support that. I think the points raised today were great, and I was glad to hear Westchester Power say last time and this time that they fully support doing it. I trust Greg and his staff to, you know, sort that out so that we can make sure we're communicating this. But in the end of the day, this, going forward with this gives our residents choice. It's a very sophisticated community. If some folks are missing the information, well, we're gonna make it easier for them to get it. But my experience in Rye is, it's an extraordinarily well-informed community. I used to joke that the easiest thing about being on the school board is you just had to listen to what everyone told you, and you'd have all the information. I think Rye residents are very sharp, and they'll figure it out, and we'll make it as easy as we can. So, and look, if you care about renewable energy, which I do, I think it's very important that we do this. If you care about price, which everybody does, then this is creating more choice for price. If you care about stability, it's, I think, a very good stability option, because you can also get out of it if you don't like it easily, and you can flip back in. And I actually, just listening to the initial part of what you said, Bill, I would say, I don't want my government making the choice for me or limiting my choices, and by doing this, we're not. We're expanding the choices or continuing, frankly, the expanded choices that the councils before us ensured that we had. So, I fully support her doing this, and I'd love to see us communicate the options to folks so that nobody feels that they're in something unintentionally.
Okay. So, as the last speaker, I'm left with even less to say. I think it's been a very good, informed discussion, I hope helpful to Rye residences they consider our decision. I will vote in favor of entering into an MOU. I like the environmental direction. I like the dark green emphasis, at least for starts. I also would emphasize the point that we don't know that this will be either more expensive or cheaper over the life of the contract. And I do see it very much as offering an additional option and an option with great flexibility. I think disclosure is incredibly important. We can't fail at this. That is, I understand Bill's preference for an opt-in. We don't have that liberty. And so, if we're gonna put our residents in an opt-out situation, we need to make clear that that option, excuse me, exists for them, and we need to explain how that's done and how very easy it is. And so, that is, that will be my reasoning. If anyone has anything further? If not, I'd ask for a motion, if anyone cares to make it, to authorize the city manager.
So, you have two different options in front of you, option A and option B. Option A is the 50%. Option B is 50% with the option to opt up to the 100.
Dark green.
To the dark green. Just a note on the resolution for the dark green. I did include, and I don't know what page it is, it's on the last page of the resolution, the criteria upon which, and it can be amended, but the criteria upon which Greg would be directed to take that 100% option. And I'll read it, just so, and again, you can tweak it on the thayus here. So, Greg would be obligated to opt into that 100% option on the condition that the tier one rec price is less than or equal to one cent per kilowatt hour as compared to the tier two rec. For the avoidance of doubt, if the tier one rec price is greater than one cent per kilowatt hour than the tier two rec price, the city manager shall not execute the above-mentioned amendment to the 2024 ESA to change the default product to the 100% renewable supply option.
And this was a request after, and this is a call that Dan and Kristin and I had yesterday, is that since that rec is an unknown price that we're doing today, I did not want unencumbered authorization to enter into something that, let's just say, for wild and crazy terms, was 10 cents a kilowatt hour more expensive. And I'm being a little silly about it, but in all seriousness, I wanted to make sure that, one, it was executable. In other words, in Dan's estimation, that was a reasonable spread, if you will, or cost increase. But I did want it to be tight enough so that I wasn't making, you know, a decision on behalf of the city and the residents.
Thank you. Thank you very much for that. And I assume that were we to exceed that spread and you found yourself beyond the authorization, you would alert the council, and we would have the ability to discuss it with Westchester Power and see if we wish to go farther.
That's correct. The only thing I would share, at least, and Dan can comment on this, it's a very tight timeframe. So, it may be one of those things that, within a five or six-day period, you would have to make that decision and then reassemble and authorize that.
Like, if it was 1.25 cents or something like that, and we're sort of, got it, okay?
Am I correct that if we, regardless of the spread, assuming we enter the dark green, if a consumer, if a resident wanted to opt for the light green, the 50% mix, they can opt down, or no?
No. It's an all or none.
You're in.
Well, I should let you answer that.
No, we would retain the 50% as an opt-down option.
Okay. So, a consumer, so a consumer is going to have, if we go with the dark green option, three choices before they even get to whether they want to look at ESCOs. They can either do the dark green for 100% renewable through Westchester Power, or they can do the light green, which is a minimum of 50% renewable through Westchester Power, at whatever that rate is. Or they can say, never mind, I don't want any of this, and they can opt out to ConEd. So, just with that in mind, and again, I'm not arguing the 1 cent spread. If that's what you all are good with, I'm good with it. But it seems to me like the residents are protected either. They're not stuck in the highest tier if they don't want to be, and they can go to the middle tier if they're feeling light green as opposed to dark green.
And presumably, obviously, light green is gonna be cheaper, a lower rate than the dark green, so there are ability to.
Remember, the one cent difference in the rec price would translate to less than half a cent difference in the actual power price, because we're going with 50%.
Oh, right.
So.
Oh, I see.
And I mean, and we took, I mean, the one cent was based upon Dan's conversation, recommendation, comfort level, whatever. I guess my point is, I'm less concerned about what the number is, but I do want very specific understanding, and I want a ceiling established by this body, not, you know, unlimited.
All right. Well, I would, I mean, Mr. Mayor, you might want to make the motion, or did you want someone else to make it?
Good. Right ahead.
All right. I'll make the motion for the, is it B? Is that the dark green option?
B is the dark green option, yes.
All right. I'll make the motion for the dark green option B, with clarity as.
With the condition as set forth in the resolution before you.
Yes.
May I have a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Cunningham is absent. Councilwoman Goddard?
Yes.
Councilman Henderson?
No.
Councilwoman Jensen?
Yes.
Councilwoman Nathan?
Yes.
Councilwoman Souza is absent. Mayor Khan?
Yes.
Anything else?
I may have a motion to adjourn.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you for pulling up.
Thanks. Thanks, Dan, and thanks, James.
Thank you for coming. Appreciate it.